I mean, safe, I mean, what is it?
Yeah, you drive up on it and there's like a jack, this was actually a screw jack. You just jack it all kind of lifts the front end up.
It's just a basically a heavier one than we got at the co-op.
Great, okay. And what we have, are doing right now is a real good, or just chain one? No, I'm not.
We probably don't wanna know what you're doing.
Yeah.
Well, we got it to co-op, you just drive on with the wheels.
That's what this is.
And you jack it up, which is fine on our standard lawnmower, but you got a zero turn. That's where all the weight's on, to go front tires. You need to hit you want to jam.
Yeah, let's get you a little say. Yes, I'm kidding that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go for it. From Amazon?
Yeah, whatever's cheaper.
You guys got an Amazon account or?
I'll just use my, I'll use the city card. Ordered four barrels of tar, it came today. Cleaned up a little bit, a little tar in the streets. Cleanup week, we're talking May twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Pretty cleanup.
I don't tire rate in with the branch thing on the main teeth right now?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be just right after that, so I mean, if they're branching, I guess it's branching.
Yeah, okay.
So, the other thing was, I couldn't remember last fall when we had Tom and Terry do the estimate for this building. If you didn't go ahead to do it, or if that was just an estimate and we just kinda left it at that.
For a shingle?
For putting steel or shingles on, so it's older.
Yeah, I couldn't remember, that's why.
We'd have to look back in the minutes on that, I know we talked about it a few times. Did you, obviously.
I don't know if you have, do that's for.
I think you kept table and we all figured out where.
That's been somewhere on the desk, we did the desk there.
I'm assuming that changed from last year too. Dude, I guess I don't remember what we decided on that, we better check in. If not, get going on it?
Yeah, at least let them know, so get on the books.
Cause I had a call from J D K Construction. He's bringing a shingle crew into town and he asked if he could do it. And personally, I don't know. Do we wanna hire a, he's like a general contractor that to me is kinda.
I thought we didn't want to, we wanted to keep it local. Isn't that what we talked about?
I would certainly thank you. I would certainly, I would talk to, I would talk to a local being Jerry and ask him if he wants to do it. If he doesn't wanna do it, then yeah, so. I'm good with that.
Okay. What is the, I know there's something on there if we couldn't decide, do you have the, you don't have the numbers in front of you anymore?
No, I'd be sure, yeah, I'd, I'd have to look through my desk and find it.
Okay, I would definitely say yes, Lauren. I don't know what you guys' opinion between steel and shingles is.
I don't have any, just go steel. I would have Tom, Terry, whoever's putting it on, what they wanna do, you know. Just leave it at that. Just make it easy on them. And then, I've been spacing this off, was there any word on that water tower contract?
I talked to him today again, you're talking for the grant money?
Yeah.
And that's something I had on, I had, sure you put on today. So, the first round we got in for, and we have not heard if we get any money back for that yet. We should hear within a month or two. And then there's a second round if we don't get.
That first round?
The first round thing, so it might be a while, so.
Sure.
I don't know, we're looking at for time wise, but it.
Sure.
If we're gonna get grant money, I think maybe wait a little bit, that's my opinion. I don't know what you guys think, cause it sounds like it pays, what was it, like eighty, twenty or something? Sixty, forty, but it was. I can't remember Lauren, one of them was a hundred percent, but we had to pay the engineering costs or something.
Yeah.
I can't remember if that was this one or not. Okay, I'll, I'll keep in touch with you guys if I hear anything, but I just talked to Tom this morning, you guys double check on that.
And then, I think it's on the agenda here, but Park Board let the city take over paying for the tires to get more. I know the Park Board didn't pay for that, they only paid for all the parks they had more than town, but they, they would like for the city to do it. They pay that person to pay it. So, somebody asked about it and he said seventy-five dollars to do it for a per move. I don't know if that's too much, a little, if you guys wanna take it over, if not.
Is that for fixing, mowing it or move all the city more?
Right. Seventy-five bucks?
To take that along the moment?
Well, you gotta move all the tires, move all that. Twenty bucks a minute, three and a half hours. Um, it took three weeks, that's just what.
How many times a month do they do that?
I don't remember. You'd have to ask Dale, he could probably get it.
I'm younger, I suppose.
I tell you guys, I wouldn't move all those goddamn tires in a.
I know, I wouldn't do it either.
I'm gonna be honest with you.
I'm not a young buck anymore.
One thing is, I think it's made of brass, so it doesn't grow as fast.
Sure.
As what.
Times are changing too, you know. But seventy-five bucks probably isn't that bad. We got a quote from that guy that does, uh, from Jordan, that does the other part.
Yes.
And he said ninety bucks to do it.
Oh, did he? Okay, well, maybe it's not so bad.
I don't know, I'm not a loaner guy.
It just, it's a little steep.
Yeah.
Maybe not. Were you doing it though? I was just like, wait a minute.
Throwing numbers out there.
I'm not doing it.
He's saying whatever it is.
Make a motion to hire, I don't even know who we're hiring, but.
Um, well, I guess it was, Tom said he would do it, this was when the Park Board was paying to do it. And he said he would do it for seventy-five dollars a time, that's when the Park Board was paying somebody to do it. So, he said he would, he would still do it for seventy-five dollars a time. Now, he would do that, you'd have to do it not on city time. You would just have to do that on his own time, so, yeah. I must be wanting to find somebody.
Does it take three hours? You can save three bucks if you.
Huh?
Does it take three hours to do it?
I don't, he won't do it for.
Yeah, I blame him.
I don't blame him.
I don't know, that's, what do you guys think? You guys okay with it, make a motion, have Tom do it? City take it on, I guess?
Yeah, I would make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Um, that's all I got.
You see, I had it here on that city hall roof. Well, Tom and Terry will get an estimate for city hall roof for shingles or steel. That's all I can find.
And they did give you one on this.
That was in, uh, October of twenty-three.
That's the last we got then?
Yeah, I don't think they ever, you know, we were ever given a number, it appears.
Yeah, they gave us an estimate for shingles and steel.
And not just, in October, November, is she?
Yeah, something like that. I'll, I'll look, see if I can.
Okay, well, let's, I don't know, it needs to be done, so I would say have them put us on their list. If you can find out if they'll stick to that, some of those contracts are only, what, thirty days, sixty days?
Alright.
If they need to send us new numbers, then we'll approve it next meeting.
Alright.
Okay, is that right, you guys?
Yep.
Alright.
Thanks, Bill.
Alright, Phil's good, auditor, what do you got?
Um, the, I just showed you the Otter Tail contract, could you take a look at it? Is it all ready to sign and send it back?
I thought so when I read.
You guys don't make any sense to me.
Didn't to me either, that's why I gave it to you.
I don't know what this is.
Alright, so let me get a.
Can you, please come for us?
We don't do this stuff, so. I think it's just some sort of easement thing.
That's what I got out of the contract, so just do their job.
I don't know what the hell the consequence would be, ignited.
Yeah.
Shut off the power.
Didn't we ask them one time when they had the engineers here? And they said that we'd have to pay to get all new lights put up all over town and everything?
That wasn't Otter Tail, what was that? That was one we just did.
Is that what it was? Okay.
We just signed a contract a couple, few months back and there's new engineers here.
Didn't, and we were joking about it, we said, like, it would cost us a shitload of money if we would.
Yeah. I don't remember that one, maybe not that yet.
Maybe it was something different, okay.
No, that idea is what you're talking about, yeah.
Motion to approve this Otter Tail Power Company contract then?
So.
Uh, second, all in favor? Do I need to sign this one or?
No, um, no, I have a docu-signing on the computer.
Okay, I don't.
I just want you guys to look at it, because I don't know anything about it. And the auditor's gotta sign, but they do a docu-sign. Um, and then there was the, the other one was the quit claim deed there. Is it okay to accept the eight hundred dollar bid to buy that property? We now have it back in Logan County. We only had one bid in it, it's the gentleman that lives right next to it. I'll send it to.
Motion to accept the.
I move to accept the quote for eight hundred dollars for that property.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that would be it for me.
Alright, well, people, and then, uh, water, sewer, policing, you're, you got any?
Oh, I do that.
That's good. Jeff, you got any street?
I talked to Steve Schultz the other day, inquiring about that broken light down by the ball field. And he came and he did fix it, but he's gonna replace all the incandescents, that's his plan. So, he's gonna, regardless if they're working or not. So, he's in the process of doing that, um, so it should cover any remaining incandescents that are out there.
Anything else? Larry, you guys? Lauren, you got it? Alright, old business, uh, the city went hurt back from Dwayne Nelson on the water and sewer to his building there? Or have we gotten any bids back? It was either.
Did you talk to, Bill, did you talk to D-Walls?
I have not talked to them about it yet.
Okay.
I guess we just gotta figure out which direction we wanna go with it.
I thought we had come from the north, the way we sounded, the way it sounded, right?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, all the maps I got, I mean, I know there was a house there. And I know there was a water line there, but I don't know if there was sewer there. There was sewer in this street?
Yep.
So, we were just hooking onto that existing line there. If anyone had a shade with it, though?
Yeah, that's what I would say, but if they dig down, if they both left the, that blue house at the same location. So, if we could find the curb stop, I'm sure the sewer line's right there too.
Can they use the same trench? Water sewer, can they use the same trench?
Well, I don't know, cause now they're supposed to be, I think, six foot apart?
Ten.
Is it ten?
Rumor has it, that's what they told me, but.
That's what somebody told me too, you cannot, if they both in the same trench.
They're gonna be ten feet apart, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's another trench, cause he's got a few. Can't use the same trench. Only gonna be that.
That'd be a damn near twenty foot line. Am I trying to go same time?
I don't know, you know, the other option would be, I don't know, I noticed he leveled it, or did a lot of scraping on Shelley's lot with that, um, old station used to be. So, I don't know, unless he would have purchased it. Or, I'm not sure, but there would be water and sewer on that property.
Yeah.
You know, but he'd have to deal with Shelley on that one. Then he wouldn't have to rip up a street.
I don't know where to go from here, cause I. I don't think we can deny him. Just cause we don't want him to tear up the new street, I'll put it that way.
No, I think we need to have, Bill, have them come bid it out or whatever, tell us what we need. Laws and this and that, are they gonna make two separate runs to the road? One for sewer, one for, you know, trench, or garbage, water, and then figure out how much is he willing to pay and how much are we gonna pay on it? I thought that was the deal, wasn't it? We gotta give him a number.
Yeah.
I think we're obligated to do that, that's the way, why, I explained to him.
I would agree, I think we should just give him a number and.
Yep.
You know, and once we know what kind of width we'd need for the trench, then call border states and see how much it would cost to repave that strip.
Yes.
And, um, have you talked to Bonn, by the way, on those main belts?
Well, we're on the list, but I haven't talked to him, when he's coming. You know, we got that culvert through down the church too, I know he's got that ordered.
So, we'll probably rip up more streets than this, getting at as far as we pay.
So, we need to get in touch with Bonn and see what it costs to do it.
Yeah.
Open that whole stretch up.
Oh, the world.
And maybe I should talk to Dwayne and find out if he, you know, if he did buy property from Shelley or.
Yeah, I don't know. He didn't say anything, I read it to him the other day and he was still inquiring about it, so.
I talked to him today too and he said nothing at all, purchasing that property.
Well, if you can get ahold of Bonn and see when he's, well, for the other stuff too, and then see what it would cost to open that up and two separate trenches and.
You know, really, depends on what his intent is. If he could get water, it would only be one trench and use a composting toilet. You know, for a single person, I know that one in Alfred, I don't remember, and this was ten years ago. But a composting toilet, and I guess they're popular out in Montana and Colorado where, um, it's very hard to dig because of the rock. There's towns that I guess have no sewer system, they do all composting toilets. And back when we did the sewer project, I know that was when that else in Alfred, I fixed it. And then I think it broke a while later again, then they bought a new one, but I don't know. If I remember right, it was like four hundred some bucks for it, for it. But this was ten, fifteen years ago. But I know I figured for the whole town of Gackel, I think it would have been sixty thousand, or I forget the number. It was a hell of a lot less than replacing sewer lines. And what these toilets are, they basically evaporate the heat and evaporate the liquid and burn the solids. And just once every, well, it depends on the usage, but once every week or two weeks, you just pull out this little tray and it's a little bit of ash and that's all it's like.
Ew. Don't sound good.
I mean, hell, there, when you pulled that tray, it had burned. It didn't smell, it had no smell.
Interesting.
There was a vent that goes outside and.
Well, let's get some estimates and see if that's the value he wants to go, I guess. And who else can see the border states, I suppose we gotta wait and see what big the trench they they need to dig there. Okay. So, we can get moving on and be done with it if it's something we're wasting our time on, or if it's something he's really interested in how much it'll cost here. Which I'm assuming we're gonna have to get a hold of border states for main valves anyway?
That's what I thought really, you know, I know they've got a small paving machine, I don't know how big it is, but earlier, one time when I talked to Luke, he said if it's just patchwork, uh, they wouldn't bring the big machines down, they just bring the smaller, and I don't know how wide it is or anything. And it uses the hydraulic pressure and lays pavement in.
Okay. Is there any, like, uh, new meters or curb stops you gotta put anywhere, you gotta tear roads out for any reason?
Just the ones on main, the three on main that we're doing.
Okay, but they'll cover that, yeah, okay.
Just cause, you know, they're redoing the highway next year, so we wanna get them done.
I'm starting to worry about that one over adjacent, so they're gonna probably end up having to put something new there too, just.
That one turns easy, it's just that riser pipe has bent, so it's hard to get on. Especially on the same driveway.
Turn the roads out, you can do it all in one, one deal.
Alright, if that's one we wanna replace, we can replace it.
Something we're shutting off every year and it's just getting more and more difficult to turn on.
Be good on that then, Bill, you get the ball rolling on D-Walls, please? Alright, land for bids, uh, that's what we just went across.
Okay.
Chris Sinker notices of application for permit, we went across that for for water, appropriation of water branches, lawn mowing, yard cleaning up. And that we were gonna wait till after cleanup week and then send the few letters we need to, that'll be agreed on, I believe. And not send everyone letters.
In place, my opinion right now, it looks good, there's a few, um, that, uh, oh.
That yellow.
Juan Corey's sister, Celeste.
Oh.
And then that house right next to South, those three guys that lived there, but other than that, there aren't too many left, I don't think.
That yellow Hanley house, they will be here on the seventeenth, so they'll probably get it cleaned up then. Cause then I noticed that white rail was kinda going over, the wind must have just did that.
Yeah, it was the last, previous windstorm.
I was gonna say, but it's, I haven't noticed it before, but they'll be here on the seventeenth, so they'll be, they're taking care of it, I'm sure then.
Yeah.
This Celeste's just gonna be back here pretty quick too, I think, and once school's out, she'll be back too.
And that was my understanding, when I talked to her on the power line.
Right.
And I thought that three is.
So, she might miss that tape, so.
But I think, you know, they haven't been a problem, so.
Yeah, make them work.
If I have to have the guys go over there and do it too. You can send them to my neighbor's house too.
Boy, I haven't talked to, I was gonna talk to Betty, she's the legal owner to that.
Yeah. Okay, uh, cutting curbs, I was, I didn't even, I forgot to look at, I heard you guys did some over here, isn't it? Okay, I haven't even.
We did. And we filled the fire department, filled it in with gravel, so it's taken care of.
Perfect. Alright.
And we'll, Jerry Matts more or less paid the whole bill and the fire department's gonna reimburse him and have him met with Jerry.
Okay. Alright, so that's taken care of, city cleanup date, we said May twentieth to the twenty-fourth.
If you're wondering, Greg, does Cuddy Curves?
Yeah.
So, we can get in better with the tanker truck and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the pressure, or tent behind it.
Yeah. I haven't heard anything else on the town's running sale date, am I missing?
She said it's in June sometime, they wouldn't give me specific one, they just said in June.
Okay, so college, they got their greenhouse going, that's awesome. Permit's done. New business, uh, we talked about mowing on tires. Uh, Bill got us shingles or steel estimate on the city hall. Uh, the thirty year shingles is thirteen, seven, seventy-five, and for steel roof is fifteen, three, fifty. I don't know if you guys wanna just make a decision now and and that's remove, shingles replaced, vents installed, new roof. If it was my place, I'd put ten on it.
Steel's gonna last a lot longer than shingle.
I'll make a motion, we just set the estimate, if it is higher, I'm sure it would be higher, but.
Yeah.
Then we put steel on the roof.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Did you second it?
Larry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll give you that fact, didn't do it. Should have wrote on there, estimate bid for a hundred and twenty, is that enough? Hundred and fifty days?
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say, so yeah, we're good. Okay, uh, all the park board stuff, I gave you guys some printouts here that I was texting with the park board member. And if you guys want, we can go through some of this quick, and if you have any questions that I can't answer, which will probably be most of them, uh, I will try and call Beth and see if she can answer some for us as far as totals. First off is those, which I thought they did a very nice job on that, the new logo, for the city, they were asking the city to pay for the new banners and a few new brackets for the poles on main with the logo, uh, they all look just like the ones that they have up now for the seniors. Uh, but obviously they'll have the Gackel, North Dakota deal.
That picture, the, there were two different kinds of, two different styles of banners.
Like brackets?
They're twenty-four by forty-eight. No, the banners itself are different.
Oh. Yeah, I saw that, I, I think she said they agreed on one after I printed these off. Okay.
Yeah, I was on that committee, I can't remember. I think we went with us this way, I think so.
Yeah, they looked, I thought they looked very nice. So, the banners themselves are ninety-six apiece. And they're guessing, park board's guessing at maybe ten, thought maybe if we drove around and took a look and seen what we thought.
How many?
Uh, guessing ten, and they're ninety-six apiece for twenty-four by forty-eight. Um, and then there are a few brackets they would need, I don't know, let's just say two or three of those, and those are a hundred and fifty apiece. I guess, I don't know what you guys have thoughts on, on that.
I would say we're probably looking at we're probably looking at like fifteen hundred total.
That's what I was kinda thinking on that, on part one of that, and then, um, they're getting the three new welcome to Gackel signs to replace the old ones. And then, um, they're getting the three new Welcome to Gackel signs to replace the old ones.
Where are they at? I don't, I don't remember existing.
By the wellhouse. There's one by the wellhouse. There's one up here, right when you turn toward our shops. There's one just on the south side of the road there, and then the one, one's over here, like Cleveland Road. On the south side of forty-six.
And what? So those three, and they're roughly seven hundred apiece to get those redone. Sounds like they're gonna auction off one, put another one somewhere in Gackel and not sure on the third.
Oh, I see.
So I don't know if that means whatever they get for the old one, they would help with the cost on that and curb the cost or not. Or if it goes to the park board, I'm not sure on that.
I don't know, would we wanna split it between this year and next year? Say we did banners this year and then next year do the welcome signs? I don't know how bad a shape they were.
They're not bad shape.
Or not? The ones, which ones you say?
The ones by the highways and stuff. Them ones are not in that bad of shape.
If we did the budget for anything, you know? Right.
Yeah.
If we just did banners and.
Okay.
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see what sort of, you know, sign, maybe we'd be replacing these signs with as well.
So as far as numbers, what are we, what are we talking difference? I mean, if we used to do everything or just split it? What are we looking at? Seven hundred apiece?
That'd be about twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one hundred and two thousand. So four thousand dollars in total. I like that idea. Split it up. Two and two.
Okay.
And then, the last thing is, and I, this is one thing I'm not too sure on, I know we're previously were Tree City USA, they'd like to become that again. Um, they've got everything else organized. Would like to apply if the city is okay with that. Have to spend two dollars per capita each year on tree things, pruning trees, et cetera. I don't know what that means. Do you know, Bill?
Yeah, I wish she was here to explain that a little more. She's kinda heading up that tree stuff.
The tree board is Beth Rizer, Doug Hague and Tracy Miller. Um, I guess just gotta get the ball rolling on that, if we're okay with them sending the application for them.
I would say we go ahead and do the application.
Okay. And I think that's all I got for that.
Um, can I say one more thing?
Yep.
I, I just had a phone call, and I did it right before I came in here, I heard. That Brandon Baker that lives right across the street here, he wants to put a, dig up a fire pit in his backyard. Wants to know if the city allows that? Does he have to do a locate or anything like that for power lines? Can he have a fire pit in his backyard?
I believe so.
I think we.
Definitely.
He just said he wanted to make sure to call over here and ask before he did it.
Yeah, that's nice, yeah.
Not that he gets in trouble for it.
I would definitely say locate, depending on how deep he's going.
Locate if, if how deep he's going, okay.
I screwed up on that one, so. Cost me a lot of money.
Okay, I'll.
And then obviously you've just gotta watch for the fire ban, I'm kinda correct?
Yep.
Cause we don't have a no ban for.
They have a lid on it though, right?
They say something about a fire restor, whether it be a grate or something. Or a hose close.
Well, now they got the curb out up here, they can just shoot straight across the.
There you go.
Fire department just straight. Right there. What's the problem? Okay, so we'll take a motion to approve the application for Tree City USA again. Us, Jeff, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then you guys wanna s- Uh, we will do the banners and the brackets this year.
Yep.
And then next year do the Welcome to Gackel signs.
Yes.
Do you want a motion for that?
Motion for that too, yeah, we better.
I'll make a motion that we do the banners and the brackets this year.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, yeah, especially since we just got the roof thing going. And build a jack so we can be safe.
Right, say hey first.
Car ramps.
Yeah. Okay, so we got that cleared up, and if she's got any more questions on anything, or maybe she can clear something up if I didn't say it right, I'll just have her come to the next meeting. Um, and we can talk about anything else then. Um, the quitclaim deed for that property, I think Lauren.
Uh, he said I have to call Isaac and have a quitclaim deed made.
Yep, to give it back.
Are they expensive?
He'll draw, he'll draw the quitclaim deed, giving it from the city to that owner.
Michael Thostin, so I'll have to get all his information from him. From Michael, I know.
Okay, so that's all you needed on?
That's all I need, to make sure that you guys are okay with taking, accepting the bid and you gotta know there was a loss of eighty dollars on it, but we're gonna make out the law.
Okay. Uh, the government fund I had on there, that I, was one of the things I answered with Bill. Uh, we should know in the next couple of months, and if not, we'll be they do that second deal where they go through all the applications on that, so we're just waiting to hear on that for, and I believe that's for the generator down there too, we put that on the same application, I believe.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I had a call from Dan Schwartz here. I don't know, it was this week or last week. You know, we also included the generator in FEMA on that ice storm. And he was asking, so I don't know about a quote getting bid. And I was a little thrown by it, he just said what size do we need and what voltage and so I don't know which, which bid or which, uh, application's gonna come through.
Okay. The one from down there, it's been what, two years now?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll just wait and see on that too then.
Yeah.
I thought he had all the specs and all that, I know you've gone through that, cause I was down in Napoleon with you when you did it. That was the second time you did it. That's when we were doing the school one too, I believe, at that time.
Yeah.
So we will wait to hear on that then. Uh, Otter Tail contract, we got that done and signed. And then Hunter Griffith, we just need to, and will that satisfy, are we still looking for?
Just one, no.
So that'll satisfy that, so we're good there, okay? And I don't even know if we need a motion, we've never had that for.
You haven't? Cause that's what they looked in back in the minutes to see if there was.
Well, let's, well, let's do, accept it then, so it's in the minutes, we don't have anyone coming back and saying we hired someone wrong again, so. Uh, except Hunter Griffith, working hard time to help those guys out whenever they need it. Grant, second?
Aye.
Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now wait it's in the minutes.
Sure.
We need to look back. Okay, uh, moving on to the bills then. You guys had a chance to look at those, any questions, concerns?
For next month, we'll see three months of, I think it's three or four months of, um, Gackel co-op, cause they got, they finally caught up and all the so I'm going through that one now on the computer.
All over city. Okay? Okay? Anything else? If no, we'll take the motion to approve bills as red.
So.
Lauren, second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, June third, uh, seven o'clock, work for everybody for next month. Anything? Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn?
All in.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?